How you doing, man?
How are you doing?
All right, at six o'clock, we'll get started with our regular meeting Tuesday the 18th, and we'll have a call to order, please, and I'll do the pledge, and Ms. Pam is gonna do the invocation, so if you'll all rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Well, I got to thank you for this opportunity to gather together, and we pray that you can be with us as we make the decisions that affect this community, that you will give us wisdom and help us to listen and speak slowly. Thank you for everyone who's here, and we ask to continue protection for our officers and frontline personnel in our city and county, in your name we pray, amen.
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 Thank you.
Roll call, please, ma'am.
Ms. Cranberry?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mayor White?
Here.
Ms. Alderson?
Here.
And Ms. Johnston?
Here.
All right, we got two sets of minutes, one from the study session and one from the regular meeting. Entertain a motion for approval once you've had an opportunity to review.
I make a motion to accept study session from March 6th, the regular meeting, March 21st.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, awards, presentations, mayor's appointment, we're going to defer that until the next meeting.
We're just looking if anybody has any idea. Yeah, I know Ms. Cranberry's worked on that.
So we'll defer that to the next meeting. All right, number six, completion review of unfinished business ordinance 2023-1108, public hearing and the final reading, and ordinance amending water and sewer rates and charges for the city of Mount Pleasant, Tennessee, is set forth in Schedule A, Section 18-125 of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code.
And mayor and members of the commission, you know, Eric Spencer came last month and made a presentation, and this has been on our website, this presentation that you all looked at, didn't give you much choice, obviously, but what has changed since the last time? The rates have not changed at all, a few things have changed about cutoff time being 4:00 p.m. and not 3:00 p.m. and things like that, but there is not, and we lowered the fire protection tap fee based on what we've been charging, so what you're voting on, most of the, none of the rates that you already talked about last month have changed in this final version that was sitting in front of you.
Correct.
Kate, I know I didn't say nothing Thursday night on this part right here, but I know six months ago, you know, we said, you know, it looked like, you know, there would be no increase in water and sewer. And now, all of a sudden, there's a pretty good sized increase.
I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Because it was brought up about the sewer system, you know, out there, and, you know, and I brought it up, you know, is there gonna be an increase? And you said then, no. But then, when he comes in, you know, he says, yes, you've got to raise it.
Well, and he did take a year to do this study, so we may not have known that information at that time, but you heard what he said.
I heard exactly what he said, but also know what happened six months ago. But besides that, is any of this money that's gonna be raised on the water and sewer, is any of that coming for the downtown revitalization?
It can't. Now, there is money in the bonds.
I understand that, but I'm talking about for the water and sewer part. None of that's gonna go for that.
There's money set aside in the bonds for the downtown, but not in our rate.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, anyone here care to speak? Please let the minutes reflect that no one cared to speak. Then I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2023-1108, that's ready.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed?
And I'll say yes because nobody was here to oppose it.
Well, they didn't give you much choice when they presented the presentation.
All right, motion carries. B, ordinance 2023-1109, again, this is a public hearing and final reading, an ordinance amending water and sewer disconnection and reconnection fees for the city of Mount Pleasant is set forth in Section 18-111B and C of the Mount Pleasant Municipal Code.
And mayor and commissioners, this used to be all in the same ordinance that you just voted on, but we think it helps to clarify by taking it out and creating an ordinance on if we have to disconnect you and reconnect you, what the rules are, so that's why we've created this separate ordinance, and I think we went over it in detail, but happy to answer any questions, you have anything for or you want to add to it?
Yes, I just, this is the cleanup ordinance, so in the, you're not passing anything new. There was some of these, like the reconnection fee or the cutoff fee or different things were in that last ordinance and in this one, and so most of them matched, but there was one where like the date was one day off, and so this is to clean it up, we put it all, like Kate said, all in this ordinance as opposed to having to have it in two places, so, and I wanted to clarify that, I think we might have said something different in your last meeting, but the cutoff reconnection fees are actually in two different places right now, and this is to reconcile those differences, so that's what this was, it's not new.
Correct.
We have not changed anything, in fact, we've added the fact that we will turn on your water on a weekend or holiday for a fee, which we wouldn't, the last ordinance said we would not do that, so we're just cleaning it up, like Cory said.
All right.
And this fee is just for the water.
There are water and sewer fees.
But you get charged once, you only get charged once for a disconnection fee, that's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Okay. So it might be water, sewer, and gas, but we charge you one time for the reconnection. I think we mentioned that last time.
Yeah, Ms. Cranberry, I think that's in the ordinance you just passed, it's on the Schedule A at the bottom.
Okay, that's what I was asking, okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions in the commission? Hearing none, again, this is a public hearing, would anybody care to speak? Please let the minutes show that no one cared to speak, entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept ordinance 2023-1109.
Got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report for mayor, I don't really have anything, other than Thursday nights, third Thursday.
That was on my list, yeah.
Should have a nice afternoon for it, so encourage everybody to get out and enjoy. All right, monthly financial budget report. Ms. Shipra?
I don't, I don't have a lot today, I'm just trying to hit the financials to you all before the meeting, not necessarily, like, I think everybody's used to getting them on Monday before the meeting and then only gives you all barely 24 hours to review them, so my goal going forward, and I tried to meet it, obviously, this month, was try to get them to you all Friday, so that gives you all a weekend to review the financials. The way we do our financials, we'll probably start changing them a little bit so that they're more, I think, user friendly, instead of just, you know, these are financials out of the system, and some of it is a lot of accounting versus, you know, what it speaks, just make them easier to read, that's, it's probably gonna take me a few months to get to that point with budget and everything going on right now, but that's, that's my future goal in the next probably six months, is make the financials a little bit more, where every fund is, because we're supposed to present our funds, enterprise funds a little bit differently from our general fund, so that way they're more transparent, and again, like I said, that's gonna be my goal, that way when you all look at the financials, you do know what the state of the financials are for each fund. Again, we got the reports to you all Friday, that is gonna be my goal going forward every month, that you will get your reports Friday before the meeting, so you have a longer time to review, but other than that, we're just working on budget right now, so we can present all that to you all next month, and if you all have, ever have any questions for me, you know, where to find me, so if you all have any questions tonight.
Thank you for getting a little.
Oh, no, you're welcome.
Because it's hard.
You're welcome.
I can tell you, I'm here pretty regularly, as most of y'all know, and Shipra is really cleaning some things up, it's not just a half a job. Entertain a motion for approval, if you don't have any questions.
Make a motion for the monthly financial budget report.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Thank you.
Second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Monthly report from city manager?
Mayor, you already talked about third Thursday, and I was just gonna, you know, come in, Shipra and Phillip, they met with the MTS rep, Tanya, all morning to talk about, you know, what we've been doing and what we need to be doing, and so we're spending a lot of time on next steps with budget and kind of basically what you just heard, but heading in the right direction.
Yep. All right, special report from other departments, wastewater liaison report.
So mayor, commissioners, the sewer trunk line rehabilitation is complete, I think we've got some paperwork stuff and punch list stuff that we're still working out, but it's behind us, the Rainy Street sewer improvements, I believe that they sent an email today that they want a reconstruction meeting on Monday, the 24th, so that's moving forward, and then the wastewater treatment plant improvements, it's ongoing, a large project, it's finally drying out, so I know Pam, you wanted to get out there to take a look at it, and I think a few of you others did too, staff is telling me that it might be dry enough to actually drive out there and won't get buried in your vehicle, so I'm happy to do that with you going forward, and then the lagoon repair project is complete, and we're closing out the building right now.
Good, 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 good. Any questions?
Yeah, did you find out anymore, the trees on the side of the?
Am I property?
No, inside of the lagoons.
No, I'm sorry, I knew you guys were talking about on my side of Hoover Mason.
But I also thought of, you know, about trees being on the lagoons, on the sidewalk, and there's not supposed to be trees on there.
But everything that's being done right now is being, is approved by the state that barge is doing, so all that work out there.
The state says it's okay for trees to grow.
Actually, it's an order from TDEC.
I'm saying the state says it's okay for trees to grow.
Yes, that's what's going on out there, yeah. And we can have Matthew Johnson come back out here, if that gives you a better comfort level, but that's what they're doing.
As long as the state says trees are healthy, allowed to grow, that's all that matters.
All right, gas system?
Everything's good, no report there.
Okay. All right, new business, resolution 2023-14, a resolution approving a pilot, that's payment in lieu of taxes agreement related to project X-Men, and I would like to take this moment to welcome Travis growth here with us, Travis is the industrial developer for the Murray Alliance Chamber of Commerce, so thanks for being here, Travis, if we got any questions, so.
We kind of went through it on Thursday, on the tax breaks, and we, obviously, that's just, we just know it as private X-Men at this point, but I think it's a real possibility, and I think it's a great investment, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to try and answer them, or Travis, who is here, and take the next step.
Just for everybody in the audience, it's roughly a $45 million investment.
Eighty-five jobs.
Eighty-five jobs, very good paying jobs, not $30,000, they are nice paying jobs, and it's a very clean project, and I feel pretty good about it. Travis, anything you'd like to add? Thank y'all.
Thank you.
All right.
Travis, I appreciate you, what y'all do.
All right, any other comments, questions?
And just, because I have to say, all of the terms are outlined in your resolution, so that shows that it's an abatement for real and personal property for seven years, and it has a staggering, like, percentage of discount, so that's all in here, also the expectations of the investment and the amount of, so the body of this resolution is basically a deal that you're agreeing to.
And you all have not heard them confirm that they're coming here, and this is all part of us just saying this is what we'll offer, so that would come later if it happens, so. Do you have a timeframe? I know that they're wanting to name a site, I thought they said by May, so I think they're moving quickly, but not sure what their timeframe is.
Still kind of the same timeline, Travis, as far as you know.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
There's a year from today's date, right? Okay, no, okay.
I think it's an awesome opportunity, I mean, this is not low paying jobs, this is good stuff. All right, entertain a motion, if I hear no more questions.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2023-14, as presented.
Got a motion in a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Cherry Glen spec building proceeds. Travis, if you want to tune in on this, I'll be happy for you to.
So mayor and commissioners, I know that you had in your packet kind of the memorandum of understanding that took place back in 2015, where the city of Mount Pleasant agreed to put money into build the first spec building, and then when the second, when that sold fairly quickly, and the idea of creating another spec building happened, this commission did it, I think I was here at that time, through another resolution, and so now you've got private sector that are building spec buildings, and we're feeling like that maybe we need to take a step back, and we've done well with our investment, which was $150,000 to begin with, back in 2015, and so we have a meeting set up next week to talk about that, it's power system, the industrial development board at Murray County and Mount Pleasant, and I think everybody's kind of in the same boat, that we're like, ready to step back and get our investment back, and these aren't exact numbers, but our initial investment of $150,000, we should have a return of at least $442,000, so that's kind of what we're planning on doing, and I think even just what you just heard just now with the last resolution, Cherry Glen is moving along, and if we continue with this, we're not gonna have that many lots left, and I think the spec buildings have done very well. Ms. Mayor, you want to add to that?
I think they've done exceptionally well.
But this money out here, we can use it for whatever.
Yes.
We decide.
You may have it already spent, but yeah.
Yeah. Check's already signed. Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
All right, entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the Cherry Glen spec building proceed.
So you're, I think I sent language out, but you're voting to basically end the MOU and to contribute the proceeds.
I make a motion to end the MOU.
Yeah, memorandum of understanding.
All right, got a motion, do we have a second? Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries, approval of debt obligation form CT 0253 for the sewer loan.
This was, we just closed on the Monday after last month's meeting, and everybody, you know, knew that was coming, but anytime we take on any additional debt, the controller requires us to complete this form, and that's why it's in front of you.
And that is again for the sewer.
The first one.
It is, it's correct, for the very first loan. So, any questions on that? I think we got that one at 1.125, 1.8% for 40 years.
Less than 1.2, yeah.
I could borrow that money every day of my life. Any questions on that? Hearing none, entertain a motion for approval.
I make a motion to approve the debt obligation form PT 0253 for the sewer loan.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second, all those in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Comments from citizens, Mr. John King, if you can come forward, please. Okay. Mr. Nathan, come on forward.
Thanks y'all for letting me speak, commissioners, I'm Nathan McBrum, Mr. King has let me represent him on his property, Gerald Dick with West Engineering, he's been our engineer on the project, last year, Mr. King brought in front of y'all a property that he had purchased back in 2020, with no intentions to develop it, just wanted to expand his property, I owned the property, joined to it, and from that point to last year, he had been approached by different builders, developers, actually wanting to develop it, so we had set up a meeting with the city, brought that in front of different department heads, and got the green light, full feet ahead, loved the project, from that point to, started in June, finished it in October, got it through the rezone process, zoning in place, actually downzoned the property, since then, we have just been trying to work with getting the letter of availability for utilities, getting an outline of cost sharing, what would be the developer, what would be property owner, just trying to figure this out, so really what we're coming here for is not in any way a personal attack on anybody, any department, anybody involved, just looking from this day forward, a timeline of how we can get the information we need to be able to get this property moving forward, without this information, we're at a standstill, and quite honestly, I don't think Mr. King would have even brought it in front if he didn't feel like that we could push this project through, he had, and he still has confidence in the city that they can do this, we're just kind of at a point now where we need to figure out who is the one that needs to make these decisions, who do we need to lean on, and where we're at from there, so like I said, it's not in any way a personal attack, we're just trying to figure out kind of where, what's our timeline now on getting these answers.
Cory, would you like to speak to that?
Sure, and I've talked with Mr. McBrum and Mr. King as well several times, but for the commission's knowledge, the engineers and Bobby Nutt, our consultant, and also like Ted and our utility department are working on a water model, and that water model, and I'm a lawyer, about to explain engineering to you, but this is the water model that says, you know, what type of pipes we need, what type of pressure it can handle, what upgrades are necessary, and it answers the question of the letter of availability, like, our letter of availability is, is water available, or are utilities available, what does it cost to get there, so we're working on, or not we, but the utility department, I don't know if Ted's here.
Yeah, he's back in the corner.
Oh, sorry.
It's basically in the engineers.
Yeah, it's in the engineers and our utility department's hands to get that finished. I have reached out to people, been told that we're hoping to have the information we need to run the water model in the next, like, by May, is that right, Ted? Could you tell them what it is and what, how that helps answer the question?
Can I ask a quick question, not because I'm new, which property are we talking about?
It is for the South Falls villages and the Barks, right across.
This is the first development that we wanted to push forward, which is what caused the need to get the water model updated, that the engineers are working on, we've got other developers that have other projects, but this is the one that is much moving forward, and so we're doing the water model, we're also doing the flow monitoring for the sewer, so we've said from the very get-go, we have the water, we have the water, it's the infrastructure that we need when you create a development like this, and that, I think.
So anytime you increase the demand, I mean, the pipes in town have changed, so lock structure you have to put in place to be able to get the water outside of town for the demand, so whenever we add any new development, take one, for example, today, they stuck one park, a section of town, but the infrastructure can support that, so once you start going on that side of town, you know, you're going to do multiple pipes to be able to get the structure down, so we have to see that flow, once we get the model built, we can plug in the demand on that flow, on the model, and they'll tell us where it causes problems back, or what we need to do to get it to that point, so like right now, we're collecting data, as soon as we get that data put in, we can build the model and show, it could be running a new line, or we could be connecting off old lines, until we get that model, it's harder to know what reverse takes and how it will go.
And we have a model, we're updating the model, that is quite old, and that's what we've been working on.
And the way that your ordinances are written, as far as infrastructure, off-site infrastructure, so you know, you've looked at, you've been to planning commission meetings, you've seen like subdivision plans and what's built on their development, but there's also the cost of, how do you get it there, how do you build that infrastructure to get it there, and so the way our ordinances are written is that's the responsibility of the developer, unless the city decides that it's for the betterment of the whole community, you know, because we can't use public funding to benefit just one development, but that's a decision that y'all would have to make, and that's where it would come really to y'all, so the letter of availability, I think, is answered by our engineers, is that right? Okay, and then there could be a potential for something else that comes before y'all that might change the cost for this development or other development, that's always the case, like, off-site infrastructure is the responsibility of developers, but you have the ultimate say as far as we think this needs to go forward, and we think it should be the city's cost, so.
Well, actually, last month, you all passed as a commission, the approach to the Economic Development Agency for a grant to create a new water line through town, and that would be part of assisting this development, and that's a $4 million grant that we have applied for, and we wouldn't, we won't know anything about that until August, but the idea is to help the developers and not put all the cost on one developer, and so none of it happens quickly, and then you've got grants out there, and I think that's the frustration that we have. Would I help you, Annie?
All that information, we've constantly been in contact, Kate and Polly, trying to figure this out, to be frank, it sounds like to me, hearing this from Ted, that from what we've been trying to get since October, it's just now starting now, so to actually announce this, figuring out this, what we're struggling with is, okay, so Ted gets his information, then y'all analyze it, present it to the commission, is that how that works? Okay, so after he gets his information, where does it go from there?
Then he can answer, they can answer the letter of availability and tell you what has to happen.
Okay.
I think that's for us.
The letter of availability is already very vague, saying we need to do more.
It's boilerplate, it's not anything. So that just figures out water, then we have to figure out sewer.
And that's what we're doing, the flow testing on.
What's the timeframe on that?
I believe it's spring.
He's right there.
Dale? And so that is, obviously, we're paying quite a bit of money for the water model, we're paying quite a bit of money for the sewer model, all of that started with your development that's ready to move forward, we have other developers that aren't ready to move forward, we're trying to share your costs.
So then after, after all that data, it does not have to come back in front of the commission to get voted on or anything like that?
If there's any kind of developer agreement, that's the other thing that we haven't shared.
There's really two separate parts, there's the, I'm gonna say math.
I know you all talk about the charter a lot, a lot of it's figuring and lining up with the charter.
Right, we don't, we can't charge impact fees.
Yes.
That's something different, so that water model, the answer to your letter of availability for water and sewer, those are essentially math answers, you know, those are gonna be engineering answers that are going to say, this is what you need to support this development, and that's gonna be answered by their engineers, if the city wants to do anything different to help share in the cost, that comes back before the commission. I talked to you about potential other ways for the city to recover costs of new development to help share in. development, to help share in costs. That is where we have a charter problem that this commission would have to address that when they're ready to. Okay, so those are two separate steps.
We're going down the road of whatever this data comes up to, this one development is going to have to burden all the costs.
No, you know, the answer, the answer is how much it costs for your development only.
Right.
Okay, if, if that's a huge number, that it's too much for you or the commission wanted to do something different, then we would look into other ways to offset that. But we can't even have that.
But you can't do that though because of the charter.
We, we can't have that conversation before we even know what the water model answer is. If we don't know the true cost, we can't talk about how to offset it. And then we have these other legal issues with the charter. So that's where we've kind of been, and we can have this conversation outside of the meeting, but they are different issues. But for us to have any meaningful conversation, we have to first know what the cost is and the responsibility to y'all.
All right, I guess, I guess my final question would be, um, it, it's, it sounds like it's probably been a while since one of these have been done to this scale or ever.
Ever.
What, what is the timeframe of, we're starting today of getting all of this finished? I mean, I, I don't want to sound rude, but this can has been really kicked down the road for a while on getting this information. I just want to know a date, that's all I'm looking for, is, is a date.
I don't know that we have a date, but the can has not been kicked down the road. We've been meeting with this engineer for a long time. You know that.
Is it a heat coat?
Yes, and you know that they said they're ready. But they don't understand the legal problems that we have and we can't, we can't.
And that still goes back on, on the water company and Ted's way described it, it's started what, a couple of weeks ago?
No.
No.
So it's a process, we have to go out and verify every valve in town. Or those pipe sizes.
Almost 750, 700 valves, 653 valves in town.
So we're lucky to develop, if it comes to town, it's certain size pipes, once it started getting to the outside of town, outside of start stepping down, up the demand, running out of the man. Well, when we start doing developments, you've got smaller pipes trying to serve an ordinary. So you have to put all that in, get the flows, figure out what you got to have to service the amount of people you have and what infrastructure you've got to change to get it. So like I said, it's, it's a lengthy process and it's not, I mean, we're taking in fire hydrant flows and pipeline size, valves, tank levels, I mean, it's all the stuff except the model. It has to be plugged in to find out what the demand will be and can it sustain or does something happen in order to get it to. So it, it really depends on where it is in the system. I mean, you know, our system's been in play for several, several years and when you start looking at all this growth coming, you've got to get it to it and you can't just go, oh, I have to, we start starving or, or cussing with them.
I'm just looking for a rough date, so I'm not constantly bothering Kate and Cory, just so we're on the same page, um, because I've got, I don't know how many correspondence back and forth with them, I know they're tired hearing from, from me, so just so we can get some kind of resolutions, we cannot move forward with this and, um, yeah, so that's, that's really what we're looking for. I don't, I don't know.
To you, I mean, we can't give you a drop dead date.
Well, I know that, I mean, but, but I mean, six months, 12 months, I mean.
I can't stand there and answer the question because it has, we're just one part of the question. It definitely is something I have to ask our engineers and get back to on the date. Uh, but, you know, it's two parts of this equation. I know what we have to do, I said, I don't know how long to take in to get this information.
And we're communicating with them on a regular basis and they know it's a top priority and that recently was May that he thought that could have that information, but the information we're trying to get from somebody else, so it's not our deadline, it's somebody else's deadline.
And that's for the letter of availability numbers, not for commission offsetting anything. So I think you'll get your numbers faster and then it might not be necessary to go to them or it might be very necessary to go to, you know, I have no idea, I can't guess of what, how the price is going to be.
Do other cities have this type of problem?
Well, other cities have the ability to charge impact fees, which changes a lot of stuff too. I mean, you still need a water model to know what, where you need pressures and, and water, but we, we are choked by the fact that we can't just say, like Williamson County, $10,000 a house, and that's what they do.
As far as your, your models, I think maybe that's what you're asking about, the models? Remember, we have been on a growth moratorium.
Yes.
Oh, I know.
Like this is, we got released from that because you put all this money into the sewer system and now you're putting all this money into a water system. And so, you know, I guess in theory, we could have started that before we had the ability to grow, but.
Depending, depending the current citizens would have bared the cost.
Wouldn't they have bared the cost?
No.
Yeah, so.
That's what we're trying to make sure.
I don't know if we can get you a date. When I talked with our consultant, they told me that they hope to have the data that they needed for water by May, prior to the make commission meeting. But again, like Kate said, we were getting that information from other people, I don't, we're not promising that date. Um, sewer, what did you say for sewer?
The sewer, they give us a sixty day timeline on, or doing a flow monitor, say, all the day. As far as timeline, you know, that, he can totally come for me myself, give me any kind of timeline at this point. Reason why, I, I just came here in September and the city that I came from, they said, yes, you can quit your taxes, yes, you can do this, and that's what happened. One whole side of our city, uh, nearly shut down and was crippled. Or I can speak for Texas, we love to put our staff approved on the property, we want to be able to guarantee your profits. You know, if I say, hey, you can throw water here, I'm going to be the guy to you to drive here. I apologize for any shortcomings, but we really want to get this right and we don't want to call it impossible. We should project, project. I have seen the downpour, like I said, we, we had an entire system, we had to put some water tanks, after that water, uh, we had one tank that was secured for our city, then we kept on, kept on. And, and the growth in Tennessee is not just competition. It's, it's, my region was open, this bag, I mean, come in there, we don't start taking the time to do this right with these water models, everybody's going to start having problems. Uh, my name's Del Brown, Assistant Tennessee President. Freak out to me if you need to. As far as timelines, I, I, I myself am going to get any until I, it's near, that's, we don't want to keep you the timeline, it must be wrong.
I'll tell you, I'll tell you from a person that's lived here for three and a half years and being on the commission and just a citizen, there's nothing I want to see more than that, get developed. Every time I drive up there, I'm looking for states, you know, and so I think as a city, we all want that, we want you to get started. And I'll say this, I have never met a harder working group of people than the city staff. There isn't any kicking the can down the, because we don't, we can't afford to, we can't, you know, we.
We need the income.
We need the income, we need this to happen, but there, these guys are working non-stop to get this done and it, you're dealing with hundred-year-olds, everything, I mean, it's, and so it's, I just hope you understand that these guys are not, nobody's, nobody's not trying to get it done. Because like I said, I want to see orange states.
So, you know, Cory and I, nobody else wants to give an answer today if we had it, we don't have the answer.
Right.
And the city is paying for the water model and the city is paying for the sewer flow monitoring. We are spending our resources to get answers to these questions and it's just, I know it's taking longer than you guys ever anticipated it would.
Guess what it takes to do it right, you know?
Yeah, let's do it right.
I'm not expecting to do it, rush through it or anything, that's not, we're not expecting, I wasn't expecting a date, I was just, an idea like, hey, you're thinking this year or where there's like no way possible it's going to happen because it's going to take longer, that, that's all I was looking for. Um, and I wasn't sure if anybody, if everybody knew what was, why it was taking so long, um, why we haven't done anything next step because there's more stuff to it. But, um, I guess, I guess what I'm hearing is, I guess Kate, Cory will just, and I guess I'll reach, I'll reach out to y'all, um, is get, get updates, that's really all we can do. Do you have anything to, to add or ask or anything?
I think please. Yeah, I, I know with, um, Kevin, Kevin, I keep leaving, I know that didn't help either, um, because that was our, one of our main contacts, I know that, uh, that's a late things, but we do, we do appreciate the, the hard work on this. Um, I know it's a big project, it's changed the whole, the whole city, so.
It is, and, and I can assure you that there's nobody in this community that wants to see any worse than I do. We need this, we need this, we need this, it's, as bad as you don't want to hear this, you're number one. You're the first project. And I hate it, but we were under a moratorium for a long time because this city did not take care of their business, okay? So now this commission is responsible for getting us back to where we can grow our community and we're going to do it right. And I'm sorry, I, I do, I promise you, I'm like Pam, I, I want to get off that and look over there and see some homes.
Any, any, the urgency or anything quicker is much appreciated, um, so we can get, get y'all going.
Thank you, Nate.
Yeah, thank you.
All righty, entertain a motion that we adjourned.
Go sit down, Joe.
Got a second? Out of here, folks, thank y'all very much.